Thank you. Do we have Attorney Saltanic on Zoom?
I'd like to call the Order of the Education Committee of the whole for the Board of Directors for the School District of the City of Allentown for today, March 10, 2022. Prior to tonight's meeting, an executive session was held to discuss confidential and legal matters. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda items and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comments at the beginning of the meeting is limited to agenda items only. If you so choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to Deputy Superintendent Ramos. She's raising her hand. Comment cards are located on the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. Dr. Stanford, do you have any remarks at this time?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to bring attention to the visit by Governor Wolf earlier this week. He came into Allentown and visited with us at Allen High School and gave a strong argument for why this is the right time to make investment in our students and to make sure that our students across the state of Pennsylvania are ready for the future and ready for the 21st century. And I really, really do appreciate him choosing Allentown and Allentown School District in particular to start his fight to keep the investment that he has made in his budget that he proposed a couple of weeks ago. And I want to thank the board members that were there in attendance and in particular President Wilt for hosting the governor being here and leading us off that day. So again, please pay attention to the governor's budget and the process that will unfold in Harrisburg. It's already started. There are hearings already being held and it's going to continue for the next couple of months. And we, as citizens of Allentown and as the family of Allentown School District, need to be very, very engaged and very, very aware of what's happening in Harrisburg on this budget. Thank you, madam.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stanford. At this time, we're only taking comments on agenda items. Do you have any cards? Mr. Secretary? Okay, we don't have any cards. So at this time, we'll begin with our first item on our agenda, which would be regarding Lost Links license renewal. This is Greiter. This is an action. Action item.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to request the board's approval to renew the purchase of Lost Links licenses to progress monitor language acquisition of English learner students at Harrison Morton, Rob, South Mountain, Trexler, William Allen, Dierf, Building 21, and Washington Elementary School at a projected cost of $154,043.50. Lost Links is currently being used at our high schools, middle schools, and Washington Elementary School.
Thank you. Mrs. Greiter. May I have a motion to move Lost Links license renewal forward to our regular board meeting?
So moved.
Who said that? Ms. Ortiz. Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. May I have a second? Mr. Thiel. All in favor? Could you let it know by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any opposes? Hearing and seeing none, this moves forward to our next regular board meeting of March 24th. Next thing on our agenda is also going to be presented by Mrs. Greiter in its Middlebury EL license.
Yes. I'd like to request the board's approval to purchase Middlebury L licenses at a projected cost of $142,750 to support language loss for Level 1 and Level 2 English learners at all district elementary, middle, and high schools during the 2022 Summer Learning Program as well as the 2022-23 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Greiter. May I have a motion to move the Middlebury EL licenses to one? This is Wilt. May I have a second? This is Matheson. All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing and seeing no opposes. Oh, is there any discussion on this motion? Sorry. Not on this one. Okay. Hearing and seeing none, this moves to our next regular board meeting, which will be held on March 24th, Thursday, March 24th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is Mrs. Sawyer will be presenting Kutztown Dual Enrollment Agreement for the 2022-2022-2023 school year, right?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Tonight, we request the board's approval of the Kutztown Dual Enrollment Agreement and move it forward to the final approval at the regular board meeting. The mission of PASHI is to provide undergraduate instruction opportunities for personal growth while maintaining high-quality education at the lowest cost possible. Kutztown was able to receive a grant this year, which will cover the tuition costs for eight to 10 of our rising seniors for them to go into dual enrollment. Those that may be interested in going to Kutztown to take a dual enrollment course, see what it's like at Kutztown. They'll be taking it virtually on our campus, so no transportation will be needed. And it's a great opportunity for us to expand our dual enrollment options next school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Sawyer. May I have a motion to move? So moved by Ms. Natasha Brown. May I have a second? So moved by Mrs. Wilt. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is, Ms. Phoebe. Of course there's discussion. Ms. Sawyer.
Are we gonna... Hold on a second, Ms. Phoebe. Can... I'm gonna let Mrs. Wilt go first and then you. Is that okay?
That's fine. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Wilt. Or should I say Madam President? At this time, Mrs. Harris?
Okay, I couldn't really hear what Nancy was saying, so I'm going to go to Brandy. Ms. Brandy, this is what I'm talking about. This is great. You know, we started with the dual enrollment, now it's going to a university, a four-year university. This is the game changer for our children. This is what we've been fighting for. Fighting at each other, looking at each other strange, but because of this, our students are getting something that nobody else in Pennsylvania gets, nobody else. So this is what Allentown is. So thank you, Ms. Brandy, your team, everybody who's going along with this. Thank you so much. I could cry right now because this is beautiful. This is what our children deserve and more. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Sorry, Ms. Phoebe. I didn't have my mic on.
Okay, so if I repeated something you said, you know...
That's all good.
No, you're fine. You guys are wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Phoebe.
You're right. Double pray.
At this time, may I have all in favor, I should say? Oh, you have... How did you push the button? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Palmer?
I just wanted to say that I think this is great. I went to Kutztown. So I'm like, yay, we're actually partnering with them, and it's a state school. I mean, this is amazing. And it's a nice diverse staff. I mean, my literature teacher, he was from Ghana. So I mean, it's a great staff up there. It's a wonderful school. And I mean, I was reading that there's not even a need for transportation, so that makes it even better because a lot of times our students don't have that ability just because of the transportation. So I really love what's going on here, and you know, you're just amazing for this. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. I really love what's going on here. Love that. But anyway. Okay, at this time, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposes? Hearing, seeing none, this definitely moves forward to our next regular board meeting for March 24th, 2022. I'm going to NYU. Sidebar going on over here. So at this time, I will have Mrs. Holly, Dr. Ramona Holly Major come forward. Oh, you're here. And you presenting Dierf and William Allen High School weight rooms?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Good evening. We're requesting board approval for the purchase of athletic equipment for Dierf and William Allen High School weight rooms. The current equipment presents a safety hazard to students and needs replacement. This equipment would be used for student athletes as well as physical education classes. The cost of the weight room equipment is $94,171 for Dierf High School and $74,424.75 for Allen High School.
Thank you, Dr. Holly Major. May I have a motion to move?
Motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any discussion on this item? I can't see your name, so can you say your name for me?
Peter. I can't tell if this is on.
I can hear you.
Thank you. We definitely do need new equipment in the weight room. She's right. I was just there earlier today, actually, in Boys Physical Education. We don't even have enough fluids to clean things, like for everybody to be able to clean their own equipment. A lot of our benches are like worn out and torn or like shaky. A lot of our bars even to lift aren't... What is it? They're like rusty and things like that. So I know there's something that Mr. Montgomery, my agent teacher, would be very happy to hear about that we're doing something about this.
Sounds like you're happy as well.
Yeah.
As we are. Thank you, Peter, for your comments. Is there any other discussion? May...
I want to make a comment.
Okay. Mrs. Brown?
I'm just happy tonight, just to see everything that's in here, knowing that we are actually investing in our youth. It's amazing, and I know Dierf, I know Allen is going to be happy as well, but it's just amazing. We're doing good things. I'm excited.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I'm excited as well. So all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposes? Hearing and seeing none, this definitely moves forward to our next regular board meeting for March 24th. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask for Ms. Tiffany Pollock to come before us to talk about the AED unit requests.
Good evening. I would like to request the board's approval for the purchase of 27 automated defibrillator units across the school district. Act 35 of 2014 requires school entities to report to PDE the number of devices, condition, the age, and placement of devices in each school. The actual cost for the devices is $42,875.73, which is slightly lower than what's noted in the memo that you have in front of you. Do you have any questions?
Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Pollock. May I have a motion to move this? Motion. Mr. Miller and Mrs. Brown, second it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, seeing none, this definitely... All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposes? Hearing and seeing none, this definitely moves forward to our March 24th, 2022 regular board meeting. Last but definitely not least, for Education Committee meeting is the ASD Summer Program presentation to be done by the academic, presented by the Academic Department.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we want to present to you some things that'll look a little bit familiar as far as past efforts that we've put forward for summer, but a few things that we're working on this year to sort of build out a bigger and better experience. And part of that is right here on the title slide, is we take a look being very intentional about trying to capture all that we're doing, even within the name, moving our sort of branding to the Summer Scholars Experience for this year. Next slide. And as you can see, as we've done in the past, we're still making every effort to make sure we're focused in on personalized learning for our students and also really making stronger efforts to make sure we're collaborating meaningfully, not only internally, but also with external partners as well. So this year, a main goal of our summer program is to make sure that we're just focusing on increasing student connections. Hopefully, it's with our programming, but even if it's with something outside within the city of Allentown, we're going to work to make sure that our students know what's out there, they know their options, and that they can connect to something that gives them a touch point and some engagement this summer. So overall, we want to increase our ASD opportunities, but we just want to make sure that there's that increased expansion for students' awareness. Our program will run six weeks from June 27th to August 4th, and we will have programming at all levels, elementary through secondary, and all of our schools will participate in summer programming. Next slide, please. So again, from that intentional lens, we took a close look at the needs of our students overall as we're looking at what can we deliver in a six-week timeframe. So from the elementary instructional focus in our K-2 band, we are really looking at honing in on the literacy foundational skills. Those would be the phonological awareness areas, phonics and word recognition. As you move forward in literacy through the third, fourth, fifth grade, again, there's still the need to focus in on foundational skills with phonics and word recognition. It starts to look a little different, but we also will build in that incorporation of informational text that kids really need to understand and be able to navigate so well. On the math strand, we're again looking at numbers and operations throughout, but slightly different as kids progress through the years. So in the kinder area, really focusing on the foundation of counting and cardinality, moving into making sure kids understand base 10 for place value concepts. And then in our third through fifth grade, looking at an intense support within fractions because that's a consistent area. And not only that, but we'll look to also make sure students are prepped for the additional grade by looking at what's upcoming as well.
For the sixth to eighth grade band, we are analyzing our star benchmark data. We just had our third benchmark window. We'll have another window before summer. Our middle school supervisors of instruction are analyzing that data and planning those six-week sessions to provide the most impactful areas with our students as far as the main standards that they need coming out of the grade they're leaving and the grade that they're rising to. You'll see that same aspect in math as well as the topics and standards for science and social studies.
Similar to... Can you go back one slide? Similar to sixth through eighth, the nine through 12 band is being reviewed the same way. We had a lot of curriculum in nine through 12 already developed. So where the SOIs are working on reviewing that curriculum and ensuring that the standards that the students are learning during those courses at those specific times in ELA, math, science, and history, that they're working on foundational skills that they need, but also working on those skills and standards that students need to succeed in the next grade level. So as they're working through the curriculum, they're developing those materials that are necessary for them to succeed, not only where they are, but in their next grade level as well. Next slide, please. So as traditionally, we work on enrichment as well in summer learning. So all students will be offered opportunities to enrich their learning through the academic priorities that we're offering in summer, but also through socially-emotional learning activities as well. Enrichment is going to be offered at all buildings and at all levels. Schedules are going to vary based on their camp and activity. Some camps will be morning camps, some camps will be afternoon camps, but they'll be from 8 to 3 pretty much all across the district and all buildings. Types of enrichment opportunities are going to include academics, arts, STEM, socio-emotional learning, and athletic.
Our Summer Scholars Program will be funded through a variety of funding sources, including Title I, Title III, 21st Century CSI School, CSI Building Funds, as well as SRFunding. We do have a new funding source this year, which is the ARP SRF3 Summer 1% Set Aside, which is specifically addressed for summer learning. We will be using this money to pay our salaries and benefits. We will be using it for the materials and supplies within the academic program, but also for the enrichment activities.
So those were the points of consideration for us as we largely moved into them, the design of the programs as we moved through elementary, middle, and high school. But I would take a moment to point out, we did reference that we've been collaborating, and that has been part of us as an ASD committee, also working with district and building-level administration to help support this, and very specifically then also trying to get teacher input through this, and then also some strategic partnerships with community partners. And really working with at that building level, with the building admin and teachers, looking to create, as Will referenced, sort of what is that cohesive six-week curriculum? Because we can't address it all, but what do we focus and tackle on with some consistency across the levels? And also being sure that we understand what's out there to be instructed and to be monitored. In addition, we'll have more specifics on the comprehensive L supports and extended school year for our special education students. Next slide, please, takes us into elementary programming. And as referenced before, we are making a point to shore up those foundational skills for our students and then also taking a little bit of a look forward, particularly in math, on what can help make you feel successful as you start the next school year. At the elementary level, we will also have enrichment programming that takes place during the morning session, which would be our typical session, to have some of that more, the more intervention or remediation pieces. But we will also be extending out opportunities for enrichment at that time for our students to have that experiential learning experience, largely through the sciences as an offering. We will also have extended day opportunities at the elementary level. And when we look at that schedule, as Brandy mentioned, that afternoon piece will run from about 12:30 to 3 o'clock, and that will include athletics and activities.
For middle school, our summer school programming will focus on student need. It will be designed to address identified learning gaps, extend grade-level learning, and engage students in high-interest opportunities. We will offer grade recovery and intervention programming in the core subjects, as well as enrichment opportunities and student activities, as well as athletics for all students that are interested. We have several offerings at the different buildings that'll be offered based on interest and the teacher delivery, and we're also working closely with our operations departments as far as additional activities and athletics during the middle school block periods for summer school.
So for high school learning, we're going to be focusing on credit recovery for those courses that students are not doing well. Learning loss through a variety of programming to include not only credit recovery and extended fifth period for students that just may need a little bit extra time past the fourth marking period, some intervention programming and enrichment programming. Again, the schedule will be 8:30 to 1:30 for the credit recovery and the extended fifth marking period, and then all the enrichment opportunities will be from 8 to 3. Instructional focus is aligned to PA Core standards. Again, focusing on those intervention skills for foundational skills that students are needing, and then those PA Core standards that students need to progress and succeed in the next grade and the next course. Enrichment opportunities include camps such as creative camps, theater and dance camp. We offer summer bridge for incoming ninth graders at all buildings. AP boot camps, math institutes, a variety of different STEM camps like forensics camp, genetics camp, things like those. CPR and first aid certifications and much more.
An extended school year, students' IEPs are followed for the purposes of providing individualized and differentiated instruction. Excuse me. Each each student will participate in his or her least restrictive environment. Related services that the students receive during the school year, they will receive during ESY. Anything that is on their IEP they received during the school year, they will also receive during in ESY. The dates for the program will be July 6th to July 28th. It will be 8:30 to 1:30 and will be located at Roosevelt, Ramos, South Mountain, Trexler and Allen. Last year, we had approximately 40 classrooms and teachers. We anticipate the same amount this year.
ESL Summer Learning Program is designed to provide English language instruction to mitigate language and learning loss for English learners, K to 12 at all linguistic levels. Our instructional focus is aligned to PA Core and English Language Development Standards. English learners will engage in activities that support social and academic language across the four language domains, listening, speaking, reading and writing. For enrichment, L students will have access to the district enrichment opportunities included at the elementary, middle and high school summer programs. And we will follow the same daily schedule as it is existing with summer programs at elementary, middle and high school buildings. There will be a sheltered English instruction opportunity as well as content area, courses and support. Our sites will be dependent on the number of L students and families that express interest. And newcomer academy students will participate in ESL Summer Learning Opportunities at their homeschools. Thank you.
Our students will be given opportunities to strengthen their skills to better understand and manage their emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships and make responsible decisions. Our ASD teachers will be provided with weekly social and emotional learning guides to promote social and emotional skills, skill building through the five social and emotional competencies. Within those guides, they'll include lessons and activities on mindfulness, restorative practices prompts and self-regulation strategies. In addition, we'll be working together with the Pratshu Singh Ha Foundation to schedule mindfulness sessions, mindfulness art lessons and mindfulness assemblies. We are also working together with the Center for Humanistic Change to provide programs for our students and collaborating with our mental health providers to continue to provide individual mental health services throughout the summer.
In addition, as a complement to the morning academic programs, and in an effort to increase summer engagement opportunities at both elementary and middle school students, will have an opportunity to extend their day in a fun and exciting way. Students will experience daily rotations through a variety of sports and activities in a structured and supervised environment. Theme weeks will increase exposure to the arts and athletics to help students discover and develop their interests.
We will monitor the impact and effectiveness of our summer learning program through standard-aligned pre and post-assessments, diagnostic benchmarks as necessary or needed, and we will be collecting attendance data for each student. This will also help us as we analyze the data to determine future remediation and acceleration opportunities for our students. And it allows the district to compute a return on the investment into summer programming.
Our elect and family center programs will continue to provide support to our students and families over the summer. Our elect program supports our pregnant teens, and they'll be offered mentoring and educational opportunities to engage in self-care and wellness activities throughout the summer. Our family center program provides families with children with prenatal through kindergarten foundational lessons and activities that promote early development, learning and health and wellness of their children.
Hold on, Ms. Tiffany. The elect program, what is that?
It's sure.
I can't hear anyone. Can you hold that thought? Is it right that, if you can?
Yeah, I did, okay.
Yeah, and then we were going to open up for discussion, but let them go through the presentation, please.
Thank you.
In addition to programming for our students, we are also offering adult ESL classes. The classes will be virtual and will be provided at the beginner and intermediate level to our families. Classes are free. They're open to our families of English learner students and to the Allentown community. Classes will occur on Tuesdays and Thursdays for five weeks during the month of July.
As we said in the beginning, we're committed to exploring and finding new collaborations with community, with our community partners to expand and explore new opportunities for the students. So this year, we are working on some college and career readiness opportunities with Gear Up. They have seventh grade summer camps, taking students out to colleges. Cootstown, ESU, Shippensburg are the first three on the list. There's two more to come. So that'll open a huge opportunity for our seventh grade students. Some of them are overnight camps, some are just day camps. ESU, we're working with them on a college and career camp to be able to provide 30 students the opportunity to go to ESU for four days, five days, and actually experience different careers and what it would be like to be in college to do that. And LCTI, we're also working with them for their STEM camp that they offer students to ensure that we have students involved in that as well. In addition to college and career opportunities, we're looking at some other unique programming opportunities by working with Valley Youth House and also looking, again, in a new way, support existing programs that again are not ours, but support our kids as in Allentown Parks and Rec. And looking to see, can we support them with a little bit more educational programming through some learning dome visits as well? And then as another option to be strategic in the way that we get in the kids that we know we really need to hit this summer, particularly those that are of a childcare age, we're looking to take advantage of some of the childcare opportunities around us by exploring ways that we can be collaborating together with LVCC and then also with the YMCA. Next slide, please. So tonight, we also want to take a moment to just sort of point out that while we said all schools will have a summer program, it will not be at all school sites. So this year, due to some of the extensive projects going on that will lead to enhancements for next school year, we have a few sites that we will not be able to occupy, and those are mostly at the elementary level. Moser, Sheridan, Washington, Jackson, and the extent to which we can use Trexler is to be determined at this point. But because of that, we'll still continue to work on the scheduling and transportation opportunities. So kids that do qualify from those programs will still have the opportunity to be transported to another school site and/or the parent is perfectly free to as well drop them off. And we'll do our best to be as convenient as possible to that homeschool that's been disrupted. And then also in support of our students, but also of our staff, we will look to make sure that we have enough professional development so that our staff feels that they can turn around a six-week program that helps move the needle a bit. Next slide, please. And all of these efforts would be for nothing if we didn't work to make sure that we got the message out as well. So part of that will entail our communications and outreach plan. So we do work on tiered invitation lists, making sure that we're looking at the neediest and moving through, and everyone gets personal invites to come into summer program. We will also make sure that we're posting these opportunities to our school and district websites. And again, that's not just our opportunities, but the other touchpoints in the city that kids can take advantage of. And also using some of our other social media contacts as well, in addition to the advertise advertising that we can do within the community. Next slide, please. So for next step, that logically leads us to the creation of our ASD communications roadmap. And then you can expect to see us in the next month or two bringing forward for approval, some of these enrichment programs, partnerships and programming that will help, really help support us internally here. We'll be taking an intensive look at recruiting staff to help support this program, because without the staff, we can't meet the needs of the students. And then also working on the most compelling invitations to help build out our enrollment. We continue to work then on the students and the transportation piece and working to ensure that we have a summer meal program offering that even if you are not part of, part of our program, but you are part of our city, you have a place to come if you need a meal. That concludes our presentation for this evening. If you have any questions, we're all here.
Yes, I do. First, I want to, I want to congratulate everyone. This is being so proactive. I'm just so proud of you all. I've taken notes. Jen Bryant, Will Sang, Brandy Soria, Mrs. Greister, Missy Smith, Tiffany Pollak, Dr. Holly. You have developed a program that is not, that is something that is unbelievable. You're joining the whole child, not just part of it, but also the socio-emotional part, the academic part, the arts part, part of it. It is, this is the best program I've ever seen. And I'm so proud of all of you for for taking the bull's bottom horn, seeing where we need it to take our children to the next level. And I want to thank you for that. And with Missy, the fact that you're going to be, you know, collecting the data and looking at the benchmarks to make sure that we succeed and that the students meet all the benchmarks and then some. So again, being proactive, I'm just in awe. And I thank all of you for even, you know, what you're going to be doing with the teachers, with the professional development. And the teachers who are going to be, you know, they're going to be working this summer with our students. Thank them for that as well. All the staff that will be in those buildings. Thank you. So the only question I have is the elect program, I'm not sure what that entails.
Hi, Ms. Phoebe. Our elect program is a grant-funded program. We have four elect outreach workers that are located at Allen and Dierath, and they support our pregnant teens through mentoring. They help provide them, or I should say, connect them with services in the community, provide educational opportunities and help to support them towards graduation.
So is that connected to our GAIN program?
Some of our students that are in GAIN are also in the elect program, yes. They do support our GAIN students.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay.
Motion. But I do want to discuss.
It's not an action item.
I don't know who went first.
I'm sorry, I'll watch the buzzers.
I went last.
I just want to say that I think this is a great program. Thank you for all the work that you put into preparing this. The one thing I am disappointed in is the fact that our special education and autistic support kids don't get the full six weeks of summer program. I think that we should be encouraging them kids to be all that they can be and not that let their limitations deter them from achieving their dreams. So that's all I have to say.
I just, I just had a couple of questions. First question was, you mentioned some different STEM programs that were being involved. Are they in separate areas? Like so, one mentioned was of forensics. Is that in a certain location? Like how exactly would the STEM program?
So last, last year, we started like kind of breaking down the boundaries of schools. So if a student, if the forensics camp is given at Allen and a student at Dierath or Building 21 wants to attend Allen, we enable that to occur. So it's not, if a camp's happening at Dierath and a student at Allen or Building 21 wants to go, it's, it breaks down the boundaries of where camps can be, so they can be anywhere and kids can access them from any school.
Okay, and they have, I think you did cover it, they do have like transportation. So if I live in Dierath's area.
Yep.
Nice.
Yeah, last time, last year, we provided bus passes.
Okay.
For students.
And my other question was where, I don't know if you covered this, where would the family center be?
The family center?
We have two staff members in the family center and they're located here in the administration building.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Go ahead, Charlie. No, go ahead. I think you wanted to do first. But before he, he raised his hand before I pressed the buzzer. So you sure? So I would like for you to go next, please.
I yield my time to, no. I do want to say, you know, and I state the obvious, never before in decades have our students needed this like now. Like probably 30, 40 years or more, that we have been through what we've been through in the last two years with the level of learning loss being an epidemic unto itself in the midst of a pandemic. And I do want to thank the staff for putting all this together and just raise the context of that. Like, like we, we have no choice but to do every single thing possible. And I want to thank our administration for putting all those resources, Dr. Stanford, you and your team, into this this summer. I want to thank you for the collaboration with the city. I heard two things in particular, and I think it's, it's a great opportunity to seize the shared resources that we in the community have and the partnerships that two could do much more than one, three could do much more than two. And, and for far too long, and I'm going to state one negative thing and get back to the positive here. For far too long, the gap between Hamilton Street, between the school district and City Hall has been far too wide. And I appreciate the administration taking the initiative and, and trust that that communication and process will continue to go forward. I know it will be reciprocated, you know, from the city. There's been lots of conversations with folks in the city as well. And I know Dr. Stanford has, you know, been working with, with the mayor and doing everything possible to ensure that the distance between here and City Hall is just but a few feet away and not a cavernous abyss away. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for the partnership. Thank you for doing everything possible for our students. And, and you know, I trust that this will become potentially even a model that will be replicated in the years to come.
Good job, Charlie.
I believe in giving credit to where credit is due. I enjoy reading the presentation. I enjoy hearing the presentation, not only as a parent, but also as the school board director, like this is dear to my heart. And I'm so excited and proud to be a part of this. Again, I think you all did a great job, and I don't know if all of you were teachers, but Jen Bryant, you know, I appreciate you. I know your heart is very close to this. But something you said has like made my soul smile when you mentioned renaming it and you said scholars. So a student said to me once that if we treat our students as, if we call our students scholars, they'll believe that they're scholars and then they will behave as if they're scholars. So the language behind any words that we use is very important. So the fact that you guys understand So the fact that you guys understand that we need to change the name or create a name that is important. To our students is so beneficial. So you know, I just leave this with you guys. As you continue to push this program, each and every staff member that has a part in this. If they believe that our students are scholars and treat them as scholars. Then they will, the students will believe it and then they will act as scholars and we all will continue to grow. So. I'm just excited. Like I get bubbly sometimes and this just feels so great to be a part of this today. So thank you all. I appreciate you. And continue to great work.
Madam Chairwoman, thank you very much. I just wanted to say real quickly to the team. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I am so very proud of every last one of you. You guys have worked really, really hard on this with all the other things that you have going on. And all of the, the, the special requests that you're getting from buildings to, to, you know, help and support them. You were able to still pull all of this together into a cohesive, comprehensive and holistic plan for our students. And I just can't wait for the summer scholars experience to start and see the smiling faces of our students. Working with our dedicated teachers during the summer. So again, thank you all very, very much for the hard work that you have put into this.
First person, Sharon Billington.
Sharon Billington, Chu Street, Allentown. I also want to commend the board on all these positive moves that you're making. But a lot of these things wouldn't be possible without this extra money that we have gotten. And it's not going to always be here. So we need to be aware of that. As Dr. Stanford had mentioned. We need to support the governor's budget, but also we need to support the lawsuit that is currently happening right now. In the Commonwealth and right now, closing arguments were happening today. But it will still take months until a decision is probably made. In the meantime, we need to show Harrisburg that we deserve to be funded equably. Equally and fairly with all other school districts. Because our demographics cannot support through school taxes alone or even marginally. And the spare funding will enable us. The estimates that we have been missing out on are anywhere from sixty-six million to a hundred and five million a year. What we could do with that money and continue to do with that money. And it has shown whether, if you believe the Republicans, money has nothing to do with education. But they're more than willing to put it into all kinds of other things like our prison systems. Where most of our children unfortunately through the school to prison pipeline will end up because we are not taking care of them now. So saying that, we are having a vigil for the fair funding. Spotlight on it and it's being co-hosted by Community Bike Wirts and Power Lehigh Valley. This will be on next Tuesday, March fifteenth at four P M. On the courthouse steps. And there will be some speakers and it will be a way for. The community of Allentown, the school directors, the administration, the staff of the Allentown School District. The students and families to show Harrisburg what this means to us. And how this is desperately needed to keep all of these things that we have just talked about today continuing. I made some copies of flyers and they're on the table in Spanish and English. If anybody would like to take them and pass them out to your own organizations. It would be greatly appreciated and we hope to see everyone next Tuesday on the courthouse steps. So thank you.
Gianna Bright.
Hi, my name is Gianna. I'm in for, I'm a fourth grader at Sheridan Elementary School. And I would like to say a huge thank you to Sheridan Elementary School. All the teachers that I had were amazing. Ms. Barco, Ms. Kish, AKA my current teacher, Ms. Kish, wait, my current teach, I messed up my speed. My current teacher, Ms. Kish, my second grade teacher, Ms. Cunningham. Including Ms. Wesko, I, including a huge thank you to Ms. Wesko and Ms. Lekner. Thank you for listening. Thank you, everyone in Sheridan Elementary School. And thank you to all the board members who help. The schools and ASD a better place.
Thank you, Ms. Gianna.
Next is Diane Hollowell. And just to reference, the AA president, Mark Liebold, is yielding his time to her. So. The extra four minutes.
Gianna, I messed up sometime too. So you did an awesome job. Don't start my time yet. Diane Hollowell Lower Sock. And I just want to say the kid from Deraf who sat there, Greg Soto, he's our Deraf student rep. On Sunday, he was honored at the National Football Foundation and College Hall of Fame banquet. At Deraf football, he was dear scholar athlete with a GPA of four point five one. I know board members' job is very time consuming and you can't realistically visit all twenty-five schools. And get to meet the one thousand one hundred and thirteen best staff that teach our students and build community. So I decided to continue with my shout outs and show the love and tell you about some of the amazing people who work in the district. And I know we have student reps speak about events at the high schools, but sometimes I think you're missing out on the amazing things. That are happening at our middle and elementary schools. So here goes, Dr. Stanford, this will make you proud. And hold on, I have to tell you this quick. I went in my closet for coffee and this was probably like four superintendents ago. I ended up with three and how it says our staff makes a difference. So here you go. It's not as good as a Penn State one. Just a side note, I did make these copies at home and I made copies for you in case you get a chance to visit the schools. And in case I run out of my three minutes to speak. I am hoping if I do run out of time, someone can offer up their three minutes because most of these amazing teachers' names I'm about to shout out. Were provided to me by their amazing administrators. So there we go. We're going to go to Anna Mae Heinz Elementary School. Tara. She gives her life skill students real world practices. She is always applying for grants and donors choose to ensure her students have the supplies they need. Janelle, their only behavior specialist in a very large building. Is always willing to help and support some of the most challenging students that are struggling. Diane, for creating a fun and loving environment for her students is involved with the school spirit committee to build staff morale. Central Elementary School, Erin, she's the only counselor for seven hundred and sixteen little ones. She is hustling each and every day to ensure that all are in a good place so that learning can take place. Sorry, when I got these, these are just amazing. Lauren, she's the school's social media champ and always posting engaging and fun activities she does with her fifth graders. Karen, she's an early literacy, literacy intervention specialist. She works with K to choose. Students to help them learn and grow a love for reading. We have Kathy, she purchased a legit snack cart and gets donations so that teachers can grab free snacks or drinks on designated days. Elementary Newcomer Academy. Iris and Leslie both use their knowledge and expertise to assist our newcomer students and families. In addition, they never turn away a colleague in need and they are there to support the staff when the days get tough. At Dodd Elementary School, I just had to share this email I received from the principal because it made my day. I quote. There's not an email long enough to shout out all the amazing things that are happening at Dodd. Well, Monica, Samantha and Patty deserve a huge bulldog shout out. They consistently support kindergarten students with varying abilities and needs. They ensure all students' needs are met socially, emotionally and academically. Jackson Early Childhood Center, Colleen. She coordinates events such as pajamas and books for every student at Jackson for Christmas. She puts together gift baskets for struggling teachers due to illness. Katie, along with working on a degree in law, school law. She is constantly helping parents and students acclimate to the new standards of kindergarten. And she communicates with her families on a daily basis. Sean, she's a librarian who goes to Jefferson and Muhlenberg. She travels between the two schools. She held a book fair for Jefferson Elementary at Barnes and Noble. She dressed up as Cat in the Hat and arranged for students from Muhlenberg College to come as storybook characters. It was awesome photo ops. And at Muhlenberg Elementary, she also held a successful schoolwide library fundraiser, leading up to her Scholastic Book Fair. Lehigh Parkway Elementary. For kindness week, Lehigh Parkway kindergarten teachers Lynn and Nicole. Participated in a community project to collect monetary donations. For children at the Lehigh Valley Riley Children's Hospital. From there, the kindergarten classes worked together to create gift packages. That were delivered to the hospital by the Lehigh Parkway staff. Mozer in Washington, a shout out to another librarian traveling to two schools. Angela, with no library budget for seven years and losing over two hundred books during pandemic. She has a part-time job scouring flea markets, thrift shops and any place she can find hidden treasures. All coming from her own pocket. I am sure she exceeds her allowable education credit at tax time. Rose Ramos Elementary, Ashley and her, Ashley and her autistic students host. A pastry and drink cart every week. Her students get to practice social skills, math skills, and they even get to wear aprons like real baristas do. And at the end of the month, they donate the money to local charities. Ritter Elementary, Patty and Marie, they are founders of the Ritter Garden. And they run the Ritter Garden Club. They have students make food from the vegetables the students tend to and harvest. Their program runs all school year and into the summer months to benefit their summer school programs. Roosevelt Elementary School. This shout out goes to the entire kindergarten and fifth grade teams. They encourage their students to be positive role models and leaders in the school through their everyday actions. They coordinate tutoring and mentoring between the two grades and every day they are working on building future leaders. Union Terrace Elementary, Myra and Karen for conducting Union Terrace's after-school. Junior Science Technology Engineering Arts Math Program, otherwise known as the STEAM Club for the second and third graders. Esther and Trina for leading Union Terrace's science reading lectures, letters, PLC for staff. These acronyms stand for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling for the Professional Learning Community. This is my neighbor, Kristen, and her fourth grade team lost everything when their module classrooms were destroyed in the fire. They went on to teach their students and makeshift gym, library and borrowed classrooms. And they were ha, just happy to be with their students and taking it all in stride. Washington Elementary, Sarah, every Monday brings in fresh fruit for her students. Julia and Tanya were nominated as finalists for the, for science reading award. Of Harrison Morton Middle School. Dawn and Carolyn wrote a grant to the ASD Foundation and Donors Choose and received science kits for their forty-eight virtual students. They spent time after hours putting the kits together for student pickup after school. They made sure their virtual students were having the same experiences as their in-person students. Rob Middle School, James is a leader in Rob's PBIS program, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. Which teaches students conflict. Strategies and leading our adolescents towards solving problems restoratively. Michael, an ESOL teacher, is an unwavering advocate for students and their parents. He amplifies Rob's Ravens values of respect, responsibility, reflectiveness and readiness. South Mountain Middle School, Larissa, she's a seventh grade math teacher. She is known as the collaboration queen. For the amazing activity she provides to her students in her classrooms. Whitney, sixth grade reading teacher makes everyone feel welcome and ready to learn. Students are pumped to learn about the power of language through real life experiences. Nicole is a guidance counselor for three hundred and fifty-four sixth graders, even though the recommended cap is two hundred and fifty. She does an amazing job building relationships with students and parents and uses restorative practices daily. Ashley, their outreach worker, she's a go get, she's the go-to person for all Spanish-speaking parents and guardians. Both in person, over the phone and on Zoom. Suzie creates a learning environment that is welcoming, safe and builds community and relationship. She's co-chair of the restorative practices leadership teams in the hope of bettering her school community. Trexler Middle School, Lauren, she is a phenomenal literacy teacher. She's the kind of teacher that leaves. That leaves a lasting impact on her students. She always looks to help them work through situations and be better humans. When you walk into her rooms, students are hanging on every word and completely engaged in reading, writing and discussion. Jessica, she works tirelessly to hold students to high expectation. And she scaffolds every level they need in order to get them there. She is the reason some of these kids come to school every day. Building Twenty-One High School, Megan. She designed a studio that culminated in an advocacy day. Which allowed students to understand the power they hold in regards to advocating for populations at risk around the world. An example was a project that included an investigation on child labor. Being utilized on cocoa farms in West Africa and the impact students can make as it relates to purchasing power. Deraf High School, Kathy continually expects the best out of her students. Her students have received many fours and fives over the years on the AP calculus exams. And as a basketball coach, she brings the community together with her Little Proskies program. Lila, she's one of the Learning Dome teachers who collaborates with other staff to build cross-curriculum shows for students at Deraf and other Allentown schools. She even spends time creating shows for after-school clubs. Jeannie, she's Deraf's amazing counselor who oversees our DE classes. She organizes financial aid workshops. Helps students prep for college interviews, schedules military brunch lunch visits and is very involved with Smart Futures, just to name a few of her roles. Senior Newcomer Academy, Colleen runs a grocery distribution for all secondary newcomer families. She started it during the pandemic and continues to receive food and monetary donations for their families. Additionally, she has expanded donations to a clothing closet. Where students can get warm coats, hats, gloves and even shoes. This is done in her own time. And I just met her for the first time. And found out she raised fifteen thousand dollars in two years. Lastly, William Allen High School, Liz, Carly, Janelle and Kim. For their dedication to their autistic support students, these four teachers are covering the job of five. Still waiting almost a year for the fifth position to be filled. They not only meet the needs of their in-person students, but are simultaneously providing virtual instruction every day. So to end this, just know there are one thousand one hundred and thirteen. Teachers out there building relationships and making a difference in our students' lives every day. And I do, I made copies for you. I will give.
Thank you very much, Diane.
Thank you.
At this time. Are there any, is there any old business? Was there any new business?
Ms. Lisa?
Yes?
I wanted to, with new business, thank Ms. Diane for that, for that total report of what is going on in our schools. It was, it was mind blowing to hear. It made my heart very proud of our teachers. And just how much they care for our students. So I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Diane, for giving us that report.
Is there any grass catches?
Yes, just, just a clarification on the vigil. Thank you, Mrs. Billington for sharing that. It's actually on the steps of city hall. Not the courthouse, but directly across the street from where you were referencing. So. but directly across the street from where you were referencing, so thank you.
Then if there's no more grass catchers, then I would ask for an adjournment. Mrs. Ortiz, may I have a second? This meeting is all in favor? Any opposes, this meeting is officially adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee of the whole meeting, the Board Directors of the School District of the City of Allentown for today, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. And again, the board does welcome public and invite public comment. If you have any agenda items and non-agenda items, please fill out the card and give that to, somebody raise your hand, please. Ms. Ramos, thank you. And we'll make sure you get on the agenda here. The comment cards are located on the table there by, or the podium by the door. Dr. Stanford, do you have any remarks this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I do not.
Thank you. Any come, public comment on agenda items? No, thank you, Mr. Hargit. Are there, okay, so on the agenda, if you haven't taken a look at that yet, there are two particular items. The, this, and number two will be towards the end of the month here, towards the board meeting. And number one, which was discussed earlier, I should say last week at our Subcommittee Finance Meeting is regarding the Veritas Enterprise Vault E Plus Technologies. We were not going to have any conversations this month. It's a very small agenda on the budget, but next month, stay tuned. Things are happening behind the scenes, budget conversations. It gets exciting. Anyway, back to, at least I get laughs from administrations. My colleagues laugh at me all the time, but that's, that's another story for another day. So the first item is the Veritas Enterprise. Look at that, take a look at my colleagues here at the, that particular item. Again, this is requesting the board's approval to renew the, the district's agreement with E Plus Technology for use of the Veritas Enterprise Vault Platform. This is basically an email archiving system that we have in place, but it is a system that needs to be renewed in the contracts. And for three years, it's one hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred sixty dollars. And it does represent a cost savings over the three-year period of time of thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Are there any particular questions of the administration regarding this item? If not, I would entertain a motion. Thank you, Mrs. Conover, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Matheson, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? And this goes on to the board meeting at the end of the month. Are there any comments from the public on non-agenda items? No comments on non-agenda items? Boy, this meeting's really short. Is there any old business from my colleagues? Any new business? Any grass catcher items? Any administrators and colleagues and public who'd like to stay a little bit longer? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, everybody. Thank you. We'll see you virtually tomorrow.